Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you out. We're excited. These are some of our favorite workshops that we have this evening to be able to recognize and honor our police department and our, I don't think we have, do we have any fire this evening or is it all just police? Debbie? Just for police. So we're excited to honor our police department with the pinning and promotion ceremony, as well as a very special presentation also along with that. So with that, Chief Ingram, would you like me to turn it over to you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you very much for having us here tonight and doing a special council workshop for this. Like you said, just to echo your comments, this is one of our favorite times that we do these sessions is to either promote current employees to positions in leadership or swear in and do a formal badge pinning on new hires and onboarding. And, you know, I know there's a lot of negative things out there right now across the country with law enforcement and sometimes we all ask ourselves, why would we get in this profession post 2020 pandemic, George Floyd, all the things you're hearing across the country. But I just want to remind you, Mr. Mayor, and this council that this is still the most noble profession in the entire world. And after 20 years of service, I would tell my four children, this is still the best job in the world to do. And so I'm honored to present to you five new hires and two promoters that were new hires about a year and change ago. So before, without further ado, what I'm going to do here for the run of show is I'm going to call each one individually. I'm going to ask them to introduce their family and give a one-minute, one-second speech about who they are, where they came from, and why they want to work for the city of Caldwell. And we'll go on and we'll go in that order. So without further ado, first up is Dustin Felice. Come on up, Dustin. So Dustin Felice is a corporal. We promoted him to a corporal. And he was a lateral hire from the city of Oakland, California, and he's been here for, what, about a year? About a year. Please introduce who you have here and bring up who's going to be pinning you.
Oh, I thought you were going to be pinning me. My family's at home. Kids are sick, so.
All right, well, after that. I had my duties. So you want, yeah, tell how much time on the job you got and why you chose Caldwell.
So I did 13 years in Oakland, came out here in 2021 with the family, did some vacationing, fell in love with Idaho. So took a couple of years to get settled in, got hired by Caldwell. Best decision ever. Great place to work, great place to, people to work for. So, yeah, just happy to be here.
Well, thank you for joining.
Thank you.
It's a lot easier when it's on my own chest. Next up is Corporal Jason Amerin. Jason, just like Dustin came up from the Oakland, California Police Department, it were not a package deal, despite what some people might think. I'll let Jason have the floor in a minute, but he worked, spent most of his time undercover chasing really, really bad drug traffickers and stuff in the Bay Area, which led all over the country and even into Mexico. So we're super proud to have Jason here. Comes with a wealth of knowledge with that street crime, gang narcotics experience. And without further ado, introduce your family and tell us why you chose Caldwell.
Thank you, Chief. My wife's at work right now, so can you pin me, sir? I'm Jason. Did about 10 years in Oakland, about a year here now. Happy to be here. Was thankful for the opportunities I had in Oakland. Thankful for the opportunities that the chief and the captain and the deputy have given me here. Happy to be here. Like Corporal Felice said, came up here, we were looking to make our exit. I had a friend that moved up here and he said, you gotta, you gotta come visit. We moved, we came and visited. And within 48 hours, I think my wife and I were like, we're moving up here. Made the transition, came over to Caldwell PD, absolutely loved it. Best decision ever made. Life is super great. Can't, can't be happier right now.
And despite being Northern California, probably San Francisco Giants fans and 49ers fans, I still like these guys. All right. Without further ado, let's pin this badge. All right, next up is a new hire. Super proud. All right. Let's see. Mark Walkholder served 20 years in the United States Marine Corps. Come on up, Mark. And served his country proud. And we're super proud to have him here. And you can talk about your military career and thank you for serving our country.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, I just retired 20 years from Marine Corps and 20 in infantry. And I was like, I don't want to live in California or go back to Chicago. So we kind of, it's like, hey, we want to come live up here, find, find something better. And then found a nice house in Caldwell. And I was like, you know what? I'm not ready to end my service yet. So what better way to still give back to the community, give back to the people? And that's why I chose Caldwell Police Department. And that's why I also like living here, too. It's a, it's a beautiful town, and I just love it.
Super proud to have you. Who's your family this year?
I got my wife, Jalee, here, and her mom and dad, Marty and Christie, and I'm going to have my, my wife.
Okay, come on up. Thank you. Here you go. Don't poke him. Are we good for you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next up, new hire, Zach Scudlow. Came up from California. Sorry. Come on up, Zach. I'll let you introduce yourself and. Welcome.
Yes, sir.
And who are you here with?
My mom and my sister are here. They came up from California.
Welcome, welcome to Idaho. It's a little cleaner, right? Yeah, less smog. No homeless encampments. People wait with all five fingers? Go ahead and introduce yourself and we'll.
I'm Zach. I lived after college in Seattle with my wife. Moved down to LA to be near my family for a little while. And then I came out, actually, my mom expressed interest in moving to Boise. My mom said, let's go. Let's go see what the city's about. She brought me out here for literally 48 hours. It was great. Loved it. Brought my wife out. She fell in love with the place. And we knew we wanted to move here. I looked into work. Obviously Caldwell's the best part of the valley, so here I am. And I'm extremely excited for the opportunity that I've been afforded by the police department.
Welcome aboard. We're excited to have you. Who will be pinning your badge?
My mom.
All right, next on the list is a new hire, but probably the most, most tenured person here. Thanks. This is Heath Albers. Heath and I met about three years ago when him and his family opened a really nice business here in Caldwell, and we just became friends since then. And he believes in this community and believes in this police department. And I'm fortunate enough to have Heath here and his beautiful wife and his children and his family. But, yeah, go ahead and shorten the floors here.
Yeah, Heath, this is my wife, my two daughters, mom, stepdad, brother, and my dad. And we moved up four years ago. And it kind of sounds like everybody else, we were only here for a few days and fell in love with it and decided to move within six months.
But you're an Idaho native.
I was born in Idaho, yes. Yeah, so I can say I'm a native. But 30 years in Oregon, so.
He's keeping score.
Yeah, fell in love with the. Well, no, a year. Yeah, fell in love with the community. We love it here. And then fell in love with the police department. So something I want to do my whole life. And I'm following this guy, so.
Well, I appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Who's going to be pinning your badge?
My dad.
Just don't poke. Or you can't.
He's tough. Yeah, that's in my chest.
Take a picture with Char. All right, next on the list, he is a new hire for Caldwell. Yes, he's from California. I don't know, I mean, I don't seek him out. They just come, they flock here. But he was a, he was a police officer in Arcadia, California, which is just east of Pasadena, San Anita, really nice, nice part of LA, very, very expensive part of LA. Joaquin Regolado, he worked five years there with the Arcadia Police Department, did a multitude of different things, from traffic enforcement and other, other jobs and stuff. And he actually reached out to me, what, about a year ago? When he moved his family here, he was commuting back and forth and said, I want to make Caldwell the place. And the first thing I always ask our laterals, especially in California, is why this city? Why not Boise or Ada County? They can pay you way more, they, you know? And the common theme is, I get, is culture, is leadership, is how we take care of our employees, how the city takes care of us. And so you don't find that anywhere else in this valley. And I can say that. So we appreciate you coming here and choosing Caldwell to be a police officer in the second chapter of your life. So who are you here with? And give a one-minute, one-second on you.
My name's Joaquin. Here with my wife, Marissa, my son and daughter, Grayson and Adeline. Like everybody else, seems like a broken record, but refugee. Just wanting a better quality of life, good work-life balance. She hit it right on the head. Culture. And I've been here for a short period of time, and I absolutely love it. Everybody that works there welcomes you with open arms, good energy. And people just want to help the community and serve the community. So happy to be here.
Congrats. A little different than Arcadia, huh?
Oh, yeah. Nice to meet you. We didn't do this in Arcadia, sorry. It's pandemic days, so.
It brings you back to his prom days, putting on a. All right, our last, but not definitely not least, is Nicholas James. Come on up, Nick. Nicholas James joins us with law enforcement experience from the state of Washington. And just super happy to have him come here and, you know, another, sorry, another refugee. But he'll go into his background and tell you why he chose Caldwell and, and super excited to have you.
I'm Nick James. I'm here with my fiancee Abby. Originally from North Dakota, so not from Washington, despite what people think. Moved out here after the Army and completed college over in Washington. Met my fiancee and her family from this area, so we moved down. And I called around to every department for going into any oral boards or anything like that. And I got to talk to Lieutenant Tucker, and he sold me on this place. It's, it's great dedication from leadership. I asked around the area. We had friends and stuff in the area. Not a bad thing to say about Caldwell Police Department. And it's been a great experience so far. Like Joaquin said, everyone's been super inviting, super helpful. And everybody's just doing good work but having a good time, so.
Welcome aboard. Thank you very much. Thank you for serving our country. Appreciate it. Come on up, Abby. Welcome back home, right?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you very much. I'm going to conclude by, this is more a message to the family and friends that are here supporting these officers. You know, like I previously said, I've been doing this for about 20 years. I spent a lot of time before I became a police officer volunteering sweat, blood, and tears for about seven years as a police explorer, cadet, volunteer in my time, because it's what I wanted to do, is with my passion my whole life, to be a cop and serve the community. So my message to you guys is a fifth-generation police officer, this is not only the best profession in the world, but it's also the most difficult to be in a relationship with someone that's a cop, and to be related to someone that's a cop. There's going to be a lot of long days, long hours, fatigue, anger when they come home from work. But you know what? You know that when they come home, they've protected and served the community with dignity and respect and compassion and professionalism. And I say that because they can't do their job in this arena without having the support, the loving support of each of you, encouraging them along the way. And the journey hasn't even started yet. For the new hires that are about to go to police academy, it's going to be probably, hopefully, the most challenging 20 weeks of their life. And, you know, they're going to get challenged physically, mentally, with all kinds of different things to inoculate their, their brain, their body into the real world of policing. And law enforcement has never been more challenging than it is today in 2025. The expectations from the community are truly unparalleled from when they were five years ago, when they were 10 years ago. If you would have asked me what artificial intelligence was and how cameras could help solve crimes before they happen, 20 years ago, I would have laughed and said, well, this isn't Back to the Future. You know, we still need police officers on the car, on the sidewalk, taking people in and questioning people. But there's so many, so much technology out there and stuff that, you know, I just want to say thank you to the council, the mayor. We just presented the budget a couple of days ago, and we're looking really good. So obviously, there's a big fiscal impact to this country right now with, with budgets across the country. But I can tell the family and the friends and the new officers here that this city has never been more dedicated to public service than it is today. Despite all the stuff that out there on social media and all the things going on, this city is thriving. And all these businesses out here would not be able to open and do business and have people coming and enjoying Caldwell, enjoying local business without feeling safe, without feeling like they're, they can walk down the street and not get robbed or the way it used to be 20-plus years ago here. So I just want to say thank you to all of our police officers that have been holding the line in this room, our leadership. And one last shout-out, I want to bring up Lieutenant John Tucker and your PSB staff, Larissa, Crystal, Jeff. Please come up here. Please come up here. So, Council, Mr. Mayor, these men and women right here behind the scenes are single-handedly responsible for onboarding and change of statuses and everything that happens in the city, in the police department at least, for recruitment, retention, training, investigations, personnel investigations, anything related to awards, banquets, you name it. Crystal, Larissa, Lieutenant John Tucker, and Jeff Peterson are truly the unsung heroes that keep me in check as seen with a little, you know, piece of paper. But that's what, that's what this team is, you know? And so it's really nice as the, as the chief of police to hear our new hires give Lieutenant Tucker credit for, you know, being the recruiter, because we don't have a recruiter. We have every single person that works in this police department is a recruiter. I expect everyone to be recruited. And, and, you know, the hard work speaks for itself. So I just want to publicly, you know, say thank you to you guys for, for doing this. And you guys have the toughest job to try to get everyone on board. I'm very demanding. I have high expectations. I know that. And I just appreciate you guys and what you do. And, yeah, so thank you. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, Council, that concludes our ceremony. And I'll turn it back over to you, sir. Very good. Thank you so much. Appreciate it, Chief. And welcome to the family. We are so excited for each and every one of you to be here at the city of Caldwell, at the greatest police department in the state. And it truly is, everything you said, I would echo all those sentiments. It is a great place to be, to work. And we're just excited for the, for the leadership and the change and everything that's happening over the police department. So we're so happy to have you and happy to have your families. We really do want this to be a family, family-friendly place to work. So we're super excited for your families as well to be here, and we're here to support them as well, just as much as you, because we know that it takes, it takes a family to get it all done. So thank you so much for that. And thank you to the families for entrusting your loved ones with the city on that. We will take very good care of them. So thank you again on that. So we do have one other special presentation, and then we should end early to be able to visit and to be able to say hello to all of you family members on that. So with this special presentation, am I turning it over to you, Michelle? Okay, very good. So if you could, please come forward. And then if you could just introduce yourself and who's with you, and the time is yours.
Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Steve Isley.
And if you could, on the microphone, just so the people at home can hear and hear everything that's being said, so.
So my name is Steve Isley, and I'm a member of ESGR, better known as Employer Support of Guard and Reserve. And we are here because there is someone who cannot be here tonight. And his name is Quintana.
Nicholas.
That's right. And he is where?
Kuwait.
Kuwait. And he's going to be there for the rest of the year. So in his absence, he made it possible for us to award some people who have supported him in both his presence and his absence. And so if you would, call them out by name, please, gentlemen. By the way, this is Don Garlock, and that is Louis Katz. And the lady in the black shirt back here is Linda Isley, my wife. And we're all members, all volunteer members.
We're going to do.
Yep, yep.
Rex Ingram, Caldwell Police Department.
Come on up here.
John Tucker.
Andrew Heitzman, Caldwell Police Department. And Mary K. Morrison, City of Caldwell.
Okay, so let me tell you a little bit more about ESGR. Employer Support of Guard and Reserve is a DoD-sponsored, all-volunteer force consisting of about 3,000 people across the country and all of our territories. Anywhere there's a base, there's an ESGR person. And our goal is to support the work that employers do in supporting the soldiers who are out doing their job whenever they have to go. Most of them are guard and reserve, all seven, seven SEALs, if you will. So we have Marine Reserve, Navy Reserve, Coast Guard Reserve. In fact, there's a Coast Guard Reserve officer that serves on the NAMA police force. I got a chance to meet him a couple of years ago. Army National Guard, Air National Guard, Army Reserve. I think I got them all. So anyway, if you guys would come up here, we're going to, we're going to do this one at a time. And Mrs. Quintana is going to come up and help us after we're all done presenting these things.
Mayor, City Council. This is written by Nicholas, and it's for Police Chief Rex Ingram. And he writes, Rex Ingram is the current chief of police for the Caldwell Police Department. And he writes, Rex Ingram is the current chief of police for the Caldwell Police Department. Chief Ingram has two decades of law enforcement experience with the bulk of his career serving in several prestigious positions with the Los Angeles Police Department. I am nominating Chief Ingram for an award today for several reasons. First, from the very first time I met Chief Ingram, he was profoundly professional. More than that, he was respectful, welcoming, and encouraging towards me. Why this matters is because I did not experience Chief Ingram's level of professionalism with my previous agency, which I will not mention. Chief Ingram understood my background, he also praised my military service. Chief Ingram also understood that I'm a current member of the National Guard and welcomed my experience onto the department. Caldwell Police Department has experienced a few setbacks over recent years, but Chief Ingram's leadership within the department has made the City of Caldwell a bit safer. Another reason why I nominated Chief Ingram for this award is the fact that he and the Professional Standards Bureau hired me onto the department knowing that I am subject to abrupt military duties for prolonged periods of time due to my military status. While I understand I'm federally protected against discrimination, it does not take much for a potential employer to discover an excuse to disqualify me for employment. Why all of this matters is the Caldwell Police Department is a traditionally smaller department with only a handful of officers. Just one day of absence from a single officer in this environment has a significant impact on personal power for patrolling the city. And despite that fact, Chief Ingram hired me, a military service member, onto the Caldwell Police Department. Truly, that was the epitome of supporting our troops. Chief Ingram is deserving of whatever award he qualifies for and most certainly supports our troops. Lieutenant John Tucker.
Yes, sir.
Marine Corps. Whoa. I was Air Force, I just say that for a reason. Lieutenant John Tucker is a long-time member of the policing community. Prior to accepting his position at the Caldwell Police Department, he retired from the Boise Police Department during the department after serving over two decades with an outstanding career. Moreover, Lieutenant Tucker has shown his commitment to selfless service as he is a veteran of our military as well. I am nominating Lieutenant.
That's a victim motion.
I know. Sorry about that, that little thing comes through every now and then. Lieutenant Tucker, for a couple of reasons. First is for his profound support of me regardless of my status as a current National Guardsman. And second was his professionalism. Around mid-192024, I was looking for employment as a police officer and I came across Lieutenant Tucker through the Caldwell Police Department's website. During my first moments of interacting with him, he was very professional and I disclosed to him that I was a National Guardsman with an EOD background. Lieutenant Tucker had no reservations and expressed his support for our military and was profoundly encouraging to me. Lieutenant Tucker shared his background with me and I got the impression I was in good company. Quite frankly, my interaction with Lieutenant Tucker wasn't part of the driving, was in part a driving force in my decision to pursue employment at the Caldwell Police Department. Lieutenant Tucker is very much acquainted with the sacrifices of our service members' experience and he supports our troops.
Here, council, friends and family, additional words from Staff Sergeant Quintana. This is regarding Andrew Heitzman. Andrew Heitzman is a sergeant with the Caldwell Police Department and has been with the city for several years. During that time, he's endeavored to provide outstanding police service through the positions he's been in. I'm nominating Sergeant Heitzman for an award due to his commitment towards supporting me and my family as I serve our country. I'm currently deployed overseas, but prior to my deployment, I was working as a police officer under Sergeant Heitzman's supervision. Upon notifying Sergeant Heitzman that I was deploying, he again expressed sincere support for me and expressed a deep adoration for his love of our country. Sergeant Heitzman ensured I was at ease during my time I was given to take off work, to make sure things were squared away at home, and he periodically contacted me to ensure my family that I had everything we needed before my departure. Sergeant Heitzman embodies what it means to support our troops and he certainly loves our country. Mary Kay. Mary Kay is currently a Human Resources Senior Specialist with the City of Caldwell. I have never personally served under Mary's supervision, however, I sincerely believe Mary deserves the Patriot Award. As I've mentioned previously, I'm currently employed as a police officer with the City of Caldwell. Several months ago, I was notified that I would be deploying overseas, which is where I currently am. Prior to my departure, Mary was so sincerely involved in ensuring that I understood what my rights were as a service member, and she ensured that I received the proper time off to square away things at home before I left. As a matter of fact, it's because of Mary that I was able to spend so much time with my family and train a bit more before I left overseas. Mary supports our troops and I thank her very much for her involvement throughout the process leading up to my deployment.
So we have our own pinning ceremony as well. We're gonna let Mr. Quintana do that. These are little pins that say ESGR on the front and have an American flag and the word Patriot. And the reason that we give these out is because we want to mark these people as special, and they truly are, for their support from somebody who can't be here to participate. And we're not allowed to hear any more.
Just the next one.
This is amongst the most fun things we get to do and we're always looking for new volunteers for ESGR by the way. Thank you for letting us be here tonight, to share this with you and to make sure these guys get recognized for the fine work that you've done to support Mr. Quintana. Does anybody know what he does in the military?
Yeah. Yes.
You guys know, but they don't. So when there's a bomb that needs to be defused, he's the guy that goes out in that ugly suit and he's there. Special guy, special guy. We're about to leave.
Come on, let's take a picture.
Okay.
We'll get the mayor down there.
Oh, absolutely.
We're gonna. Mary, you wanna stand next to the toilet? Mary, come on in. Come on in, we're getting there. Okay.
Okay, here we go. One more time, do it again.
Thank you guys so much, thank you very much.
I'm just gonna end the special session from down here, if that's all right. So again, so excited to have these new officers, excited to be able to recognize these current officers, and thank you for that recognition to be able to do this. So thank you so much for being here as well. So that'll end our workshop at this time. So we do have about 25 minutes before our city council meeting starts. So excited to be able to visit a little bit with all of you to just kind of hang out. So thank you again for that. So that will end our workshop at this time.